The hearing is being conducted by the G O Committee on behalf of the council. Bill sixteen dash fourteen will establish a public election fund to provide public campaign financing for a candidate for a county elective office, regulate certain campaign finance activity of a candidate for county elective office who voluntarily accepts public campaign financing, authorize the Maryland State Board of Elections to administer and enforce the public campaign financing system, provide the four penalties for violations of the public campaign financing system, and generally amend the law governing elections for county elective offices. A G O Committee work session is tentatively scheduled from Monday, March seventeenth at two P M. Persons wishing to submit additional comments should do so by the close of business Wednesday, March twelfth, so that your views can be included in the material which staff will prepare for the committee's recommendation. You will have three minutes to speak. A yellow light in front of you will come on when you have thirty seconds left in which to finish your presentation. A red light will come on when your time is up and will stay on should you run over. Should you wish to leave the hearing before you have an opportunity to speak, you may leave written testimony with the clerk. And let's see what else. Speakers will not be allowed to see time to another speaker. And so we're going to get started. We have for Group A, Joe Beach, Kate Waybright, Jennifer Bevan Dangle, Tony Holness, William Roberts, and Ronald Levin. And just to remind everybody, there is a button at the base of the microphone if you can push that when you speak, and then when you're done if you can push it again so it can be turned off. And we will begin with Mr. Joe Beach.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Beach, Director of the County Department of Finance, and I'm here on behalf of County Executive Isaiah Leggett to testify in support of Council Bill sixteen dash fourteen. Based on authority granted in two thousand thirteen by the Maryland General Assembly, Bill sixteen dash fourteen would establish a public election fund and a voluntary system of public campaign financing. The county executive shares the council's interest in creating a public campaign financing mechanism that would encourage greater voter participation in county elections, increase opportunities for residents to seek elective office, and reduce the influence of large contributions. County Executive Leggett believes that certain amendments would clarify and strengthen the law and streamline its administration. First, the bill should clarify responsibility for investigation and enforcement of alleged violations of the law. The State Board of Elections currently has a responsibility to address violations of the campaign financing laws. However, the bill is silent on this issue other than specifying that a violation is a Class A civil violation. It is important that investigation and enforcement be independent to ensure that monitoring compliance would be carried out objectively and to enhance public confidence in the results of any investigation. In addition, an amendment to clarify the order of priority in dispersing county contributions to certified candidates would clarify the council's intent on administration of the fund, and especially in the event of insufficiency of funds. For example, if more candidates participated in the public election fund than anticipated in the amount appropriated to the fund, those candidates who applied for and were certified early in the process could receive more funding to those candidates who applied later in the process. Finally, it should be noted that depending on the number of candidates in any contested election who participate in public campaign financing, the law could have a material fiscal impact. For example, the cost of the two thousand ten primary and general election under the proposed legislation would have been over nine point six million, and for the two thousand six election would have been as much as thirteen million, if all of the candidates participated in public financing and received the maximum amount of public funds. He knew I would mention that. Because the public contribution would be funded out of general revenues, this allocation would compete with other county general fund services, including education, public safety, and safety net services. Before qualifying period begins, there should be a public financial statement as to the total amount available for public financing for the ensuing election cycle. Thank you for for me the time to address the county council. The new administration looks forward to working with you on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beach. Kate Waybright?
Hi. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Kate Planko Waybright. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify in support of Montgomery County Council Bill sixteen fourteen. I'm here representing Progressive Maryland. Progressive Maryland is a statewide advocacy organization. We have twenty-three thousand members and supporters statewide, many of whom live right here in Montgomery County. And also, there are twenty-six affiliated religious community and labor groups that are a part of our work. Our mission is to improve the lives of working families. We're very happy to be here tonight testifying in support of this long-term, long-term, long-time priority of Progressive Maryland's. And we're so thrilled that there's unanimous support on the council for setting up this system. Progressive Maryland began advocating for public financing of elections as a result of our efforts nearly a decade ago to expand health care coverage and raise wages for all Marylanders. Organizationally, we noticed that the playing field was tilted against us, and so it remains today. The average middle-class family isn't able to contribute to a campaign in the same way that a large, wealthy, special interest entity is. This creates a public opinion climate in which people feel as if they aren't being heard. But public financing of elections will change that perception. Public funding works because it shifts the focus of the campaign away from big-dollar, wealthy donors and back to everyday people. Investing in clean elections is an investment in our democracy. These programs allow more diverse candidates to run for office, increase competitiveness in the process, and result in a better legislative debate. These bills have the potential to change the very nature of elections in Montgomery County and are essential to a governing body that values enacting policies that build a strong middle class. Thank you so much for your time, your consideration, your support, and we urge a favorable vote on sixteen fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Bevan Dangle?
Good afternoon. Thank you to all the members of the council and especially to our sponsor for introducing this critically important legislation. My name is Jennifer Bevan Dangle. I'm the Executive Director of Common Cause Maryland. We're the good government advocacy group in Maryland, and this is our bread and butter. We couldn't be more excited to be here. And as Kate mentioned, we do want to thank the council for your long-term advocacy behind the scenes that even got us to this point. We're very proud that last year the General Assembly finally gave the authority to the counties to move forward with these programs, and we couldn't be happier that the county that was the strongest advocate for getting that authority is the first one out the gate in utilizing it. So thank you for that. And no one knows better than you that the cost of elections is increasing year after year after year. Nationally, we've been hit very hard by the Citizens United case that opened the door to third-party spending, and we're expecting any day now the court's ruling in McCutcheon, which could strike down aggregate limits on donations to campaigns. That would have a very direct impact in Maryland and the quality and the nature of our campaigns. While public funding cannot bring down those costs, only the Supreme Court can do that at this point, public funding can change how the campaigns are run. They can change the focus of the campaigns, both for the citizens and for you, to give you the flexibility to make the citizens the central point of your campaigns again. We're particularly excited about the provisions in this bill that allow for a graduated match, that the first fifty dollars will be matched at a higher level than the consecutive amounts. That empowers the everyday citizen, the citizen who can only give twenty dollars. Suddenly, that twenty dollars is magnified in a way that it never would have been before, and that restores people's faith that their voice is heard, not just on Election Day, but throughout the entire campaign process, and therefore throughout the entire legislative process that comes afterwards. These programs have also been proven to open the door to non-traditional candidates. If you look at our written testimony, we've got some statistics out of Connecticut where the public funding program has been in place for some time and been really thoroughly vetted out and tested. And just one example, the woman representation in the Connecticut State Legislature increased significantly after public funding was implemented, and the Latina representation in the state legislature likewise increased about thirty-three percent. So public funding is not just about allowing the citizens to have a bigger role in the campaign, it's allowing people who might have felt inhibited from even trying to run for office to take that plunge, knowing that even if they don't have those connections with the healthy, big donors, that they can run it just on their citizen advocacy. These programs are very complicated. We've been through several drafts just of this initial bill. We're already hearing some more excellent comments to strengthen the version you have in front of you. So Common Cause looks forward to working with the sponsor, the work group, and the council to make sure that this is really a model legislation that we can take to other counties in Maryland who are asking for it and are very excited to see what you pass here. So we thank you for your time and your consideration of sixteen fourteen.
Thank you. Tony Holness?
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. My name is Tony Holness, and I'm here on behalf of the A C L U of Maryland, and we are in support of this bill. Public campaign financing enhances the accountability of public officials to the everyday voter and thereby loosens the hold of big corporate, big-money, big-dollar interests. Public financing also allows candidates and officials to invest their time and their energies and their resources in addressing and investigating the concerns of Marylanders as opposed to raising dollars for their campaigns. Now, the A C L U of Maryland is cognizant that campaign reforms sometimes come at the cost of various civil liberties, including the freedom of expression and the freedom of expressive association. However, the current systems of private financing do raise several disadvantages, especially with regard to certain demographic groups, you know, low-income, low-wage-earning communities, as well as more diverse communities, communities of color, and so forth. And so we believe that the response to the current system is in fact to expand the resources that are available for political advocacy, not to restrict them. And so Bill sixteen fourteen, we do think, is a positive step in the right direction and so for the foregoing reasons, we urge a favorable report, a favorable vote. Thank you.
Thank you. William Roberts?
Thank you for allowing me to testify. I'm William Roberts. I live up county in the Rockville Gaithersburg area, and I'm the Vice President of the Montgomery County Young Democrats. The Young Dems stand in strong support of this legislation, and we want to thank you all for supporting it. We all know all too well the power of special interests in our public discourse and in our work, whether it comes to advocating for more affordable housing in the county or pushing efforts like increasing the minimum wage. We found that our county has powerful special interests on the other side of many issues that we and your other constituents care deeply about. And although these special interests won't get a vote per se in our upcoming elections, we all know that they have an outsized voice in our political process because of the amount of money that they're able to pour into our county's elections. Now, this proposal before us levels the playing field indeed, so that elections and the policymaking process can be once again about bold ideas and not just big checks and elections. And we believe in the power of small donor-driven public financing to shift that playing field and put the ownership of our electoral process back in the hands of your constituents and our neighbors. Now, there's near universal support, as you've heard, at the federal level, the state level, the local level, that there's just too much money in politics. There's universal support at least on that question. And as you've heard from previous examples, public financing really does reduce the role of wealthy donors and special interests and allows constituents to once again own their elections. So as a constituent like myself, knowing that my small donation will be enhanced through a matching fund will really matter, and that my small donation will really matter to the candidate of my choice empowers me and changes the way that I view the political process. And as candidates and elected officials like yourselves, you know, knowing that you can spend your time discussing issues and reaching out to voters instead of raising money does change the way that you can do your jobs. And so overall, you know, we've also seen that public financing does provide special benefits for diverse populations. Research done by many organizations has shown that low-dollar donors tend to be women and minorities from nonaffluent communities. So public funding systems across the country are enabling more diverse members of our citizenry, women, minorities, young people, to really become part of the political process as either candidates or donors. And so we believe that this system will work for our majority and minority counting. It will work for the citizens still stuck at the wrong end of our economic duality, where some prosper and some fall victim to dramatic increases that we've seen in the wage gap, the income gap, and the wealth gap. And so enacting a system of public financing will enable all citizens, especially those at the margins, to participate fully in our electoral process and allow our elected officials to spend more time studying the issues and connecting with constituents in need. So we believe strongly that Montgomery County is ready to lead our state on public financing, on citizen-funded elections, as we've led on countless issues before, and we want you to know that the Young Dems are ready to stand with you to support this bill, and we urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Levin?
Good evening. I'm Ron Levin, and I'm speaking on behalf of the five thousand members of the Sierra Club of Montgomery County. The Sierra Club endorses Bill sixteen fourteen. Conventional wisdom holds that the states and cities are the laboratories of democracy, but no longer is public financing of elections an experiment. Fourteen states, including Maryland, provide public financing. All that experience was available to sixteen fourteen stractors. A poll of Maryland voters in two thousand nine found that seventy-seven percent believe political contributions have a corrupting influence. In the last election cycle, two-thirds of the donations to county council campaigns came from donors who gave more than two hundred and fifty dollars. Some donations were for thousands of dollars. Maryland's citizens clearly want to reduce the influence of money on who gets elected in our state. Public financing counteracts public cynicism, cynicism that is toxic to our democracy. Public financing results in better, more objective government decisions. It frees candidates to spend their time talking to voters instead of to be contributors. It will free lawmakers to devote their attention to the full-time work of legislating, not fundraising. Critics of public financing claim that it will produce a flood of frivolous candidates. This bill, however, sets high hurdles to qualify for public funding. Critics have said that public funding does not work because incumbents continue to be overwhelmingly reelected. That's a criticism built on a myth, because public funding is not intended to be an incumbent removal scheme. At most, it can only take away one of the incumbent's many advantages. Opponents of public financing may complain that it would be a fiscal burden. A few minutes ago, I heard Mr. Beach give his estimate of the highs and the lows of the cost of financing an election cycle. His high was, I believe, about ten million dollars, not a year, ten million dollars for an election cycle. Depending upon the number of candidates, that would be the high. Again, it's not ten million dollars a year, that's ten million dollars a cycle, that's two and a half million dollars a year. Two and a half million dollars is just a bit more than one percent of just the growth in revenue between this fiscal year and the next, as forecasted by the Department of Finance. Only a bit more than one percent of revenue growth. We can afford sixteen fourteen. We can afford a measure that delivers healthy government, fosters objective decision-making, and reduces public cynicism. Is there another measure that can do so much so cheaply? The Sierra Club of Montgomery County urges you to pass Bill sixteen fourteen.
Thank you. I see one. Councilmember Reamer?
Thank you. I think this question, I'll direct to the Common Cause representative, but council staff may wish to remind me, why can't we just ban contributions from anyone who's not an individual? We're not allowed to do that, right?
Right. Unfortunately. Unfortunately, the county's election law is very tightly governed by state election law. While municipalities have a lot more flexibility, the counties have their hands tied to a very strong extent by what the state campaign finance law will allow, and there are concerns about getting into the free speech issues. So there are states that have a corporate ban, that special interests, that no corporations are allowed to donate.
There are states that have that?
There are states that have that. Connecticut is a state that actually has that in addition to their public funding. So we'd be happy to pursue that option, but I think it would have to come through the state legislature.
I mean, we're preempted by state legislation to do any, to make any restrictions on contributions other than through this bill if somebody accepts voluntarily, accepts public financing.
Councilmember Andrews?
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming out to testify, and thanks to all who are waiting to testify as well. This is the beginning of the public input process, and I look forward and welcome others who may want to comment to let us know what they think and any suggestions they have. The Government Operations Committee has a committee session scheduled for March seventeenth, I believe, at two o'clock, which is a Monday afternoon. I do want to say it was a twelve-year effort. The council worked on this for twelve years to work to get this authority from the General Assembly, so it was a long path. And I want to note that Common Cause Maryland played a real key role in the legislation that passed last year that had some, that was a campaign finance reform bill, and that included this provision. It wasn't easy, I understand, to ensure that this passed, and so thank you for doing that, because it was important to have this authority. But as you noted, it only gives us the authority to set up a voluntary, partial public financing system. We can't require candidates participate, and that is the restriction within that we are operating. So any other campaign finance reforms that would apply to all candidates has to be done at the state level, although, as you noted, municipalities have had that authority for a long time. Rockville and Gaithersburg can pass campaign limitations on funding, on contributions, and on disclosure that we cannot do. They could set up a public financing system as well. But the county has only gotten this authority as of last fall, and so we are moving forward expeditiously but carefully to make sure we get it right, because the details really matter in this kind of system, because it has to be attractive enough that candidates participate in it, or else it won't work. Thanks.
Councilmember Benson?
Questions for Mr. Beach. I, there seems to be some discrepancy about cost here. So you, your testimony talks about the cost in a year, the gentleman from the Sierra Club talked about the cost in the cycle. Could you sort of flesh that out? How much would all of this cost?
Well, first of all, it depends on how many candidates participate in contested elections and how many are certified. And I think what Mr. Levin was referring to was look at it over four years in an election cycle rather than just one year, and that may be a good way to build up the fund instead of, you know, biting off five to ten million in one year, build up the fund over time. So I don't think we differ, it's just how you characterize it.
And I'm sure when we have our session, we'll be able to flush that out even further.
Yeah, we can provide you with the details for how we came up with that.
Thank you so much. Group B, Tom Moore, Mark Corman, Evan Glass, Dan Formansky, Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, and Michael Lor. Can you turn it off? We just have some issues with two on at the same time. Just push that button at the base. Okay. Tom Moore?
Good evening. My name is Tom Moore. I currently serve as a member of the Rockville City Council, but I appear before you tonight as a private citizen who is currently a candidate for the Montgomery County Council. I'm therefore intimately aware of the impact that this bill would have if it becomes law. As a candidate, I spend a good deal of time knocking on people's doors. Going door-to-door is something I enjoy, and I learn a lot about what's on people's minds every time I go out. But I also spend a lot of time as a candidate asking for contributions, often calling businesses and people who live outside my district or the county. Those making corporate contributions have little more than a financial interest in this county. Those making contributions who live outside the county have no direct stake in the outcome of our elections or in the life of Montgomery County. Yet our current campaign finance system requires me to spend far too much time talking to these folks. Instead of talking to corporations, I want to be talking to the moms and dads of Montgomery County, the young people and the seniors. I want to hear from them about the county that they want to live in, raise their kids in, retire in. I want to hear what I need to know to best govern our county. It's their voices and their stories that should be driving the messages of our campaigns. A good bill that gives candidates and council members the ability to spend more time focused on their neighbors will produce better governance for Montgomery County and in the end will produce a better Montgomery County. Keeping corrupting money out of politics is why I led the fight on the Rockville City Council, to ensure that elected officials follow the highest standards when disclosing their financial interests. It's why I led the Rockville Mayor and Council to pass a tough ethics bill that went beyond the state of Maryland's newly tough standards. It's also a major part of what I do day-to-day. In my day job, I work for Progressive Majority, a national organization that works to recruit, train, and support progressive champions to run for local and state office in battleground states throughout America. Institutionally, we strongly support the public financing of campaigns, as do most groups interested in clean government, such as Common Cause and Progressive Maryland. But we do hear words of warning from elsewhere in the country that poorly crafted public financing laws create as many problems as they fix. I urge you to pay careful attention to the thresholds this bill provides. The balance they establish is the key to creating an effective system of public financing. Set them right, and they will enable new voices to be heard. Set them wrong, and they will give, they can give artificially large megaphones to extremists on both ends of the spectrum, megaphones paid for with taxpayer dollars. Montgomery County has long been graced by a history of dedicated public servants who have governed our county well and wisely. It's a tradition I hope to join. This bill reflects priorities that I have pursued throughout my career in public service. This bill will allow candidates to connect with voters as we would want them to, talking to people's hearts rather than their checkbooks. It will allow people with deep roots but shallow pockets to compete effectively. It will allow, those are the best ideas and not the best rolodexes, to guide Montgomery County into the future. I urge that this council pass Bill sixteen fourteen, and I urge the county executive to sign it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Corman?
Good evening. My name is Mark Corman. Although I hold several affiliations with organizations in the county, I wish to emphasize that I am testifying tonight in my individual capacity and speak only for myself. I applaud the county council for taking up Bill sixteen fourteen. The authority to enact this legislation was granted only in two thousand thirteen, and the council's quick action to implement the public financing system is to your credit. You have heard and will continue to hear tonight many important points about the legislation before you. First, the system will reduce the impact of special interests on our elections. Second, it will ensure that serious candidates have the funds necessary to share their message and ideas with voters. Third, it will hopefully rein in some of the costs of electioneering. I agree with all of these important observations, but wish to emphasize one particular issue. I'm optimistic that in a county like ours, public financing can become a cultural norm. What do I mean by cultural norm? Well, for constitutional reasons and tortured interpretations, as we heard during the last panel, a public financing system cannot be made legally mandatory. But I hope it becomes mandatory as a matter of public relations and good government. An analogy that I've heard made is to the use of Union printing by Democratic candidates, which is not required but is generally done by any candidate running with a D next to their name. I hope the cultural norm of public financing is not limited to Democrats, but embraced by all candidates in the future. I'd also like to see a system like this expanded to state elections as soon as possible, preferably before June twenty-fourth, but perhaps after. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this important bill. I'm hopeful that a system of public financing will reduce the influence of special interests, ensure serious candidates are heard, and perhaps free up all our elected officials and candidates to spend more time on policy and less time on political fundraising. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan Glass?
Good evening. My name is Evan Glass, and I'm a candidate for the council from the fifth district. And I'm here this evening to bluntly state, raising money for political campaigns stinks. The amount of time I've spent on the phone speaking with family, friends, neighbors, colleagues, acquaintances, asking them to support my political campaign is time I would rather be spending talking with voters about the issues of importance to our community. But in this age of politics, where the amount of money in one's campaign account is more important than the ideas in that candidate's head, we have to acknowledge that the system is broken. And let's face reality, this is how politics is played in most jurisdictions, especially a few miles away down on both sides of Pennsylvania Avenue. I used to be a journalist covering national politics for CNN, and I know all too well how much time our congressmen, senators, and presidents spend raising money. And all too often, I covered a story that usually fell into the category of "follow the money," where the actions of an elected official were tied to financial contributions he or she received. Well, here in Montgomery County, we are ready to set a new example. Now is the time to create public campaign financing for candidates seeking office here in Montgomery County. By providing matching funds for donations below one hundred and fifty dollars, we are opening the doors to elected office, to individuals from diverse socioeconomic backgrounds. And when the new system of matching funds is established, it will allow more individuals like me to run for office, non-establishment candidates who represent the full spectrum of the community. You know, I grew up in a home with a single mother who worked two jobs. My modest upbringing provided me with a set of values and experiences that I want to bring to the council, values that promote social and economic justice for all of our residents. By creating a system of matching funds for donations below one hundred and fifty dollars, we are allowing the voice of the people to prevail. Political action committees and corporations should not have the ability to drown out the collective voice of the voters. And by maintaining a qualifying period that begins three hundred and sixty-five days before the primary election, we are leveling the playing field for new candidates with new ideas. we are leveling the playing field for new candidates with new ideas, by no longer allowing incumbents to spend years raising funds regardless of the office they seek. The best way for government to function is by having open debates about important issues that affect our lives. Campaign finance reform is a way to encourage more residents from diverse backgrounds to enter the political arena and truly bring about the progressive reforms that our communities deserve. Let's elevate our public discourse and pass this legislation.
Thank you. Dan Formansky?
Good evening. I'm a resident of Silver Spring. I am a political strategist, a lobbyist, a communications professional, a sort of political jack-of-all-trades, and I share something really important with all of you, which is I love the political process. I like hearings, I like policy, I like crafting legislation, I like beating back bad bills. And I work almost exclusively with social justice organizations, organizations I consider that are working for the greater good. And it's great to be here today because I view this as a social justice issue. I think public financing is a fundamental part of building a stronger democracy. It's about ensuring that the voices of those that have greater access to money do not drown out the voices of individual citizens. It's about allowing the interests and the priorities of working and middle-class constituents to be better considered. Public finance of elections is also about increasing public confidence in government and elected officials, increasing public participation in the political process, diversifying who runs for political office, and allowing incumbent legislators like yourselves to focus their fundraising on their own constituents, not special interests, and to free up more of your time for lawmaking and for policy. In my research, I've seen that jurisdictions from Hawaii to Connecticut, from Los Angeles to New York City, have successful public finance programs. A few statistics stuck out for me. According to a report by the Center for American Politics and Citizenship, which polled several thousand legislators across the country, in general, the average state legislative candidate in a state without public finance spends 28% of their time fundraising. The average state legislative candidate in a public financing state spends just 11% of their time fundraising. In Connecticut in 2012, 77% of successful candidates were publicly financed, and an analysis by Demos found that public financing in that state increased representation by women and by minorities, as well as voter participation in general. Or you can take the example of New York City Council races, which has public finance small-dollar matching program, versus races for the New York State Assembly, which doesn't have public financing. Data shows that small donors to city council candidates come from a much broader array of city neighborhoods than do cities' small donors to general assembly candidates in New York. Small donor matching funds help bring participants into the political process, who are traditionally less likely to be active, and strengthens the connection between public officials and their constituents. Today, the challenges of building a perfect democracy are ongoing. That's why I value your leadership on this issue, and I hope that what you do in Montgomery County reverberates not just across the state but across the entire country. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Fanny Gonzalez?
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, and I live in Kensington. I'm here before you to testify in favor of Bill 1614. And most of you know I'm a candidate for the House of Delegates in District 18. Here, your bill will not affect me, okay? With that said, I think my situation can shed some light on why it is important to create a public election fund. This is about building an opportunity for people who have never run for office due to the fear of not having enough money to run a successful campaign. I grew up in a low-income family, just like it happened to my closest friends. I share this because my childhood friends represent my closest network. They are the ones who, without hesitation, contribute and volunteer to my campaign. They do it because they share my values, and also do it because they feel so proud of seeing someone coming from their community run for office. It's a big deal, not just for me, but also for them. Due to their financial pressures, my average friend can only contribute up to $50 towards my campaign. It's my reality, and that's the reality of candidates like me who come from low-income neighborhoods. I know not everyone has the courage I have to run for office, knowing very well that I will not raise as much money as other candidates. Yet, I doubt that other candidates will gather the enthusiasm that my campaign brings. These are folks who are not super voters. Some of my friends have never voted for, had only voted for President Obama. It's a community who feels dismembered. Voting is just not part of the radar. Again, my network does not contribute with large amounts of money, however, they do extremely well in canvassing efforts. Having access to a public election fund could drastically change my situation. I could focus more on voter contact and less on how to pay for everything I need. Nowadays, when we ask why we only have six Latinos elected officials throughout the state of Maryland, it's hard not to ponder on the financial constraints that exist within the Latino population in order to seek an elected position. It's not just about motivating Latinos to vote for a presidential election, as we have done very well in the past, but it's also to vote in large numbers in local elections. For that to happen, we need more candidates who reflect that population. I strongly believe that having access to a public election fund will produce more diverse candidates and more community members participating in our local elections. This is what is happening to me, with deception that I'm not, that I don't have the public funding, obviously. Therefore, had to end up self-financing a significant portion of my campaign, which most people coming from low-income communities just cannot do. I thank you for sponsoring this measure and serving as a model elective body for the rest of the state, and I hope this will give a needed boost for the General Assembly to move forward with public financing of state legislative campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Lor? No? Okay. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to Group C. Brian Doherty, Armin Behr, Shelley Sherman, Ralph Watkins, Beth Allen, and Alan Hyman. Okay, we'll begin with Mr. Doherty.
Thank you. Appreciate you having us all on this snowy evening. I particularly want to, my name is Brian Doherty. I'm from Bethesda, and I'm a co-chair of an organization known as Progressive Neighbors. Our group is a Montgomery County-wide organization active since 2006, primarily at the state and county level, in a wide variety of progressive causes on issues related to taxation, education, affordable housing, tenant rights, labor, and healthcare, and that, and the like. We're a democratic grassroots group that accepts no outside funding. We endorse candidates and work on issue advocacy. I'm happy to report that our group strongly supports Bill 1614, a public financing option for Montgomery County Council and executive candidates. We commend Councilmember Phil Andrews and his co-sponsors for introducing this far-sided legislation. Our hats go off to all of you. It's rare to see incumbents pick stand in such unanimity. I don't think that's been, I haven't seen that in other states or other cities on this particular subject. Action by the legislature in 2013 enables counties to provide a public financing option, which is a longtime progressive goal, beginning in the 2015-2018 election. Montgomery County has the opportunity to lead the way on the local level, as it did a few years ago on the trans fat issue, as it did recently on the well-received move to raise the minimum wage. We're ready to lead again, I think. This legislation, by favoring small contributions within the reach of the average voter, will help slow a profoundly disturbing trend in our county, in which less than a third of the donations to county council campaigns come from those making, donating $250 or less. Under such circumstances, while all voters are equal, some are clearly more equal than others. The structure of this bill is reasonable, and it's appropriate. Once candidates meet a modest fundraising threshold, donations of $150 or less are matched with public funds, with smaller donations receiving a much higher match. With these changes in the law, candidates who will still spend time raising funds, you can't get around that. I heard earlier that candidates spend 28% of their time. That, I've been involved in a lot of campaigns, that struck me as low. You really can spend an awful lot of time raising money. But the biggest bang for a buck in fundraising will come from the smaller donor, whose everyday concerns will more likely be addressed in the electoral process. In all likelihood, this will mean a new type of voter, and just as assuredly, a new type of candidate. Again, thanks to Councilmember Andrews and others for putting this bill on the agenda. Let's make it law as promptly as possible. Let Montgomery County become a laboratory for democracy in Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you. Armin Behr?
My name is Armin Behr. I live in Bethesda, and I've been in Montgomery County for 49 years. I'm not representing any group tonight. I'm really impressed with all I've heard so far, and I'm inclined not to even read most of my statement because it's all been said already. But I do want to make the point that, that we're, we've heard so many positive things about Montgomery County. We're living in a country where most of us believe that our national government is not working. And I think that, that the main reason it's not working is because of the influence of money. It's great to see that it's possible to overcome this, or to at least make progress at the local level. The local level has also been a place where money has corrupted, where development interests have taken over, in some cases, even in Montgomery County, to the extent that citizens had to organize and get rid of the entire county government. That was some years ago, some decades ago. But there's always the tendency for, for development interests, because they have so much to gain from the decisions of the county government, to spend enough money to make sure that they have friends. And, and I think the legislation that you're proposing here would seem to solve that problem, perhaps once and for all, if provided it is accepted by people running for office. We're dependent on voluntary participation, and as other people have pointed out, it's very important that the, and I hope, I'm not an expert in this area, I hope that it has been crafted in such a way that it will engender maximum participation. Because if it does, if, if most of the candidates elect public funding, then by definition, they will not be taking money from special interests. This would be the most important thing that has happened in the time I've lived here in Montgomery County. So I encourage you to pass this, and, and in your work sessions, I hope you will deal with the, the issues of workability and, and fine-tune it in a way that'll, that'll maximize the possibility of participation.
Thank you. Shelley Sherman? Shelley, can you please press the button at the base? And Mr. Behr, can you please turn yours off?
Oops, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Sherman. I live in Tacoma Park. I am representing over 1,300 U.S. Action members in Montgomery County. U.S. Action is a national progressive organization that fights for working people to have a voice in democracy. We are proud of, we are proud of the leadership of our affiliate, Progressive Maryland, in the fight for clean elections. I am here tonight because I've been a Montgomery County voter for over three years, and I care about the county. In my role of Finance Director at U.S. Action, I deal with money every day. We are a nonprofit organization that relies on donations from average people. We have a lot of contributors, but no matter how many dollars come through U.S. Action, it is only a tiny drop in the bucket compared to what the super wealthy and corporations spend in political world. It's harder and harder in this country and in this county for the average person to have a voice and representation. That's why we urge the Montgomery County Council to pass Bill 1614. Public funding works because it shoves the focus of the campaign away from the big-dollar wealthy donors and back to everyday people. Investing in clean election is an investment in our democracy. Three programs, these programs allow more diverse candidates to run the, to run for office, increase competitiveness, competitiveness in the process, and result in more meaningful legislative debate that matters for real people. Change start at the local level. We need an America, a Maryland, a Montgomery County that works for all of us, and a Montgomery County that works for all of us starts with everyone, anyone can afford to run for public office, so that government reflects who we are as a community. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Ralph Watkins?
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Ralph Watkins, and I'm a resident of Silver Spring, Maryland. This bill is modeled, obviously, after the Presidential Campaign Fund, and I was one of those who was an enthusiastic donor when it first appeared. I checked that box every time on my income tax return. But the more I studied campaign financing, the more I became convinced that matching fund programs are an unnecessary detour on the road to effective reform. Fortunately, there is an alternative method of public financing that is far more effective in achieving the goals that we are all seeking to achieve. The problem with adding taxpayer money to political campaigns is that we will get more of what we don't want: robo-calls, bumper stickers, and yard signs with no information on the issues. Further, many voters are left in the dark as candidates direct their mailings to their base. Throwing more money into this broken system will do nothing to improve the quality of information being provided to the voters. Studies of similar programs in other cities and states reveal that they are ineffective in reducing the influence of money in politics, as independent expenditures easily circumvent the limits placed on the candidates. Further, several of these programs have been tainted by misuse of the public contributions. There is, as I said, a proven alternative to this approach that would be far more effective in serving the voters. For more than a century, Oregon and Washington have mailed to every voter a voter's pamphlet that includes a statement from each candidate. In Oregon and Washington, voters have said that it is their most important source of information. Because of this success, voter's guides with candidate statements have been adopted in six more states, as well as some counties and cities. This successful model of publicly-funded voter services could readily be expanded to include debates, video recorded for broadcast, and streaming over the internet. This would provide voters a convenient way to compare candidates in a format that would help draw out more specific statements on the issues. As I note in the appendix to my testimony, even one think tank that has advocated public campaign funding has conceded that voter's guides are effective in reducing the influence of money in politics and have the added benefit of encouraging more citizens to vote. Candidates would prefer, of course, to have access to taxpayer money to spend any way they choose. Voters, however, would prefer a voter's pamphlet and debates. In this situation, you must choose whether you will serve the voters' interests or the politicians' interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Allen?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today in support of Bill 1614, which would provide public campaign financing for candidates for Montgomery County elected office. I live in Tacoma Park and have been a resident of Montgomery County for almost 12 years. It's no secret that Americans are fed up with the influence of money in politics. Recent national polling indicates that more than 70% of voters think the U.S. election system is biased in favor of the candidate with the most money, and more than half of all voters believe that most politicians are corrupt. Think about that. Conventional wisdom is that elections are bought and politicians are corrupt. And I must admit, my opinions are often no different. As a result, while I'm a faithful voter, I rarely make individual political contributions anymore. When I talk to people about campaign finance reform, and I have the opportunity to do that because I work with the Communications Workers of America and often have the chance to speak to our members and communicate with our members, on this, there's a lot of cynicism about whether bills like this one will make a difference. They think that special interests will find and exploit loopholes, and that public money will go to waste. I disagree. I think bills like this, especially at the local level, are critically important to restoring the health of our electoral system, because they enable potential candidates with broad community support to run credible campaigns for office. They They serve as a testbed for creating strong campaign structures within the public financing framework without relying on corporate contributions. Ideas pioneered and perfected at the local level will, over time, have beneficial effect on state and federal campaigns. They allow elected officials to spend less time fundraising and courting a small group of wealthy donors, and more time interacting with larger numbers of constituents. And most importantly perhaps, public financing will change voter expectations for how campaigns are run. In some cases in Montgomery County, a single special interest has contributed more than half a candidate's campaign funds. That's just not acceptable and we cannot allow it to become the norm. The same polling I mentioned earlier found that an overwhelming 92% of voters say it is important for elected leaders to reduce the influence of money in elections. I've been proud that my county has been leading the way in issues that are important to me, including recently, raising the minimum wage. I urge you to take the lead in restoring faith in our democracy by passing this important public financing legislation. And I promise that when public financing passes, I will happily put my money where my mouth is and make contributions to candidates who participate in the public financing system. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Hyman.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to have me speak here tonight. I testify here today as a young person concerned with the future of a society, as well as a corrosive dissipation of the fundamentals of the republic in which we all call home, which we all live. Our political culture, I believe, is defined by a state of paradox. On the one hand, we hear these constant complaints that there is not enough young people involved in our political debates and our, kind of imbued in our civic culture, and that our system suffers from this lack of diversity, something that other people have spoken about or too here tonight. But on the other hand, you know, one can, one cannot help but notice how the very system that complains is in many ways designed to discourage or sometimes even block those voices that people cry for. This bill before us would unlock the voices of that silent but passionate majority of underrepresented citizens waiting for an inclusive political system that welcomes them with open arms. According to a 2009 Gonzalez poll, roughly 70% of Marylanders support a public financing system of our, for electing our elected officials. This bill would also allow you, our elected officials, to spend more time thinking about the issues, issues we face as a county and as a people, and in return possibly bring better solutions to the table, as well as new ways of imagining what our county and what our society could look like. In many ways, the future of our political system lies before us with this bill. We can either collectively reaffirm that Montgomery County is a progressive county that firmly believes that the role of the common person in his or her government is fundamental, or we can completely fail to address what I believe is not only the greatest social project of our time, but the most pertinent to preserving our republic. During the early years of our nation's founding, Benjamin Franklin was asked what type of government our country will be governed by. He responded, "A republic, madam, if you can keep it." Hopefully, with the passage of this bill, we can move one step closer to preserving it. Thank you very much. I urge an affirmative vote on Bill 1614.